I'm meeting order and ask the clerk if we have a form.
Yes, sir, we have a form.
All right, with all you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the case about Shelby Post 82.
Resources to educate inmates on the challenges with opioid abuse. Item F, consideration from the library, grant of $400 from the North Carolina Arboretum Society, and we're going to use those dollars to engage kids with science and nature. Item G, from the Health Department, budget amendment number 60, request to budget $22,368 in grant funds from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Specifically, those funds will be budgeted in the environmental health function of the Health Department and earmarked for new training on additional state mandated sanitation regulations for existing environmental service officers. Item H, from the Planning Department, at your last meeting, you scheduled a public hearing for June the 7th for case 2213, which is located at 1318 Stoning Point Road. The request was to rezone restricted residential parcel to residential. Since that point, the petitioner has approached us and asked us to remove the petition. Therefore, we need to cancel that public hearing, and this is in consideration of that request. And finally, for consideration, item I, from the Legal Department, the county owns a piece of property, the parcel number is 43596. The tax value of this piece of property is $10,786. The county has incurred cost of $3,924.80, and we're here to request that the board approve beginning the upset bid process. We have received an offer in excess of $26,500, which far exceeds both the tax value and our investment. And at this point, we're simply asking for permission to begin the upset bid process. We'll run that for 10 days, and once we have a final recommended proposal, we'll bring that back to the board for consideration at that time.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, Commissioner, you've been presented the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions for the manager?
If there's no question, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is we're into the regular agenda. The first item is the solid waste franchise agreement. Jeff?
Good evening, Board. Thank you all for allowing me to come before you all today. I'd provide an update on the residential curbside collection RFP process. A little bit of an overview today, what we're going to go through on this topic is a little bit of background on the RFP, what curbside residential and commercial has changed over the last year. Review the RFP that we had direction from the Board of the last few commissioner meetings, as well as a staff analysis on the RFP bids submitted in this curbside collection. Really, a little bit of a timeline, and February 1st, 2021, Board directed staff to analyze the exclusive franchise agreement between Republic Services and the county to provide exclusive residential and commercial curbside collection throughout the county, an analysis of the open market versus that exclusive franchise agreement. And June 1st, the Board voted to pilot open market commercial collection in unincorporated areas of the county with a specific focus on market rate, waste integrity, and litter reduction. So in July 1st of 2021, that open commercial process began in the unincorporated areas, again focusing on that market rate, waste integrity, and litter reduction. The solid waste department created a vendor registration system focusing on those three categories and still providing exclusive residential curbside collection with Republic Services. The February 25th, in February 25th, 2022, at the Commissioners' Work Session, the commercial rate analysis was presented and showed that it outperformed with the market, really self-correcting on the commercial side. Staff sought direction on the residential curbside collection, and during that work session, the Commissioners directed staff to look at dividing the county into different zones to provide coverage throughout. With that, staff proposed four zones, folks providing coverage across all unincorporated areas of the county to identify more demographic information within those zones, looking at the US Census and excluding census tracts that are within city limits. From this, we identified that there are 3,287 unique customers throughout the county. Focusing in those three zones, you see they're substantially equivalent with dispersed customers throughout the specific zones. Really looking at the demographic information, this is an additional fee for residents. Having the curbside residential is looking at the median income. See, it's pretty equivalent as far as the amount of income and representation to the county median income, as well as households dispersed throughout the different zones. Again, looking at the different mileage radius of 5, 10, and 15 miles for those customers. In that process, after that, in getting direction on those four zones, the county issued an RFP, really focused on two different options at the direction of the Board. One, option A, providing, vendors could submit for option A, providing for an entire county, or for option B, a selection of zones specific, opting to include one or up to four of all zones. And during that process, it was a six-week bid. The county, the staff met with vendors, hosting, contacting all the vendor registration, really answering any questions throughout that process and just being available. At the end of that RFP, on April 29th, we had two bids submitted for Republic Services, who is the current provider with 36,000 employees nationally, locally based, 50 full-time employees providing services throughout the unincorporated of the county, as well as Public PSW Services, based locally in Kingston, in Cleveland County, providing services to Latimore, Earl, and Kingstown as well. In review of the proposals, you have Republic Services bid for option A, providing coverage for the entire county at $25 per member per month. Again, they're currently providing services to all 3,287 unique customers. PSW Services provided selected option B, which will only be partial coverage in zones three and four of the county, at a cost for collection of $20, $20.99 per member per month, as well as current residential customers are currently providing for 400 services. So this would change their operational model as well. And looking at the two comparisons, you have option A for entire county coverage, as well as for option B, zones, partial coverage for zones three and four. Really, staff seek direction from Board direction on drafting ordinance for curbside collection with either option A, with Republic Services at $25 per member per month, or option B for partial coverage with PSW Services at $20.99 per member per month. As this is an ordinance change, this would be, staff would draft the ordinance, and the Board would have their first reading on June 7th at their next meeting, and the second reading would be on June 21st. With that, that's all I have. Are there any questions from the Board?
Thank you, Jeff. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the presentation?
Since PSW doesn't cover the entire county, is Republic willing to cover the rest of the county if they don't get that section, or do they want all or nothing?
In speaking with Republic Services, they are only interested in providing coverage for the entire county.
And just as a point of clarification, Commissioner Whitstein, I think what we have to consider is what was submitted, right? And so really, just two proposals. One does cover the entire county, the other one is a specific carve-out.
Do we have any other questions?
Do we need? Motion to move forward?
So we need a motion to move forward with one of those two options, so that we have the first read of the ordinance change on June 7th, and then it would be followed with a vote on June 21st.
Well, you know, we've got to provide service for the entire citizens of this county, as far as I'm concerned, so I.
Before, right, weren't they charging 27?
Yeah, so the current rate is around 22 and some change, but before the Board gave direction to move through the competitive model, the proposed rate, and it was still in a negotiable form, was a dollar or two higher than the 25. Yes, sir.
I guess I'm like Commissioner Whitstein. I think that we need to look out for the whole county. I don't know anything about PSW. Apparently, I know they do service some of the smaller municipalities, and I don't know if they would have the equipment or enough manpower to do the whole county. But I think we're obligated to look out for the whole county rather than just a couple sections. So I will second his motion.
That they, PSW currently does Kingstown, is that right?
Uh, Kingstown and Earl.
Would they, would they lose that if we went with this?
No, that would not impact municipal values.
Okay.
So Commissioner Whitstein, was yours a motion?
A motion, yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor will say aye. Those opposed will say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Board.
On number five on the agenda tonight is the manager's budget recommendation for fiscal year '23. Mr. Epple?
So first, I just want to say thank you to the Board for what feels like an intersection in a very challenging budget environment. I also want to thank many members of our staff and our team, Cleveland County. We try to be very consistent in saying that we have a teams-based culture and that we have, you know, we focus on high performance. And that, nothing could be truer than the folks that I get to work with every day. And I think the budget really compilation gives us the opportunity to work at a level in detail that really day-to-day operations doesn't provide. And so I'm grateful for those folks being here. I'm grateful for their input, grateful for the leadership that they show every day. And we're all grateful to the Board of Commissioners for your policy direction and your leadership. So I'll jump right in. Quick overview of what we proposed to talk about tonight. I would point out that each of you have a copy of the budget book, which includes the executive summary, the budget message, all of the details that are in that. Following tonight's presentation, there will be public distribution of that notebook to various points throughout the county, as we customarily do. It'll also be available online for anyone who wants to review the budget. Two weeks from tonight, we'll hold a public hearing as statutorily mandated, and at that time, the Board could make changes, or you could vote to vote on the budget ordinance as is presented. But just wanted to point out, that's kind of what our next steps would be. I'll start tonight with a little bit of overview of the development process and what I believe has been very, very clear direction from our Board. I'll touch briefly on just the best outlook and forecast that we've been able to put together from a revenue perspective. As the Board knows, many of our revenues are so dictated outside of our control. They're economically driven, and we need to have a good pulse on what we expect and what we speculate moving forward, because in Cleveland County, we believe that from a budget perspective, the most conservative approach is to forecast revenue first, and then to allocate your expenditure side based on that. Touch on the general fund, our capital plan, which we've spent a tremendous amount of time on. Touch briefly on education funding. We'll talk about the support that we provide outside of our organization to our nonprofit partners and other community partners that may help bolster the services that we provide organically, and then we'll close with some solid waste recommendations. So the first thing that I want to say is this has been a very rewarding budget process, but it's also probably been the most challenging budget that I've been a part of since I've been in Cleveland County in either role. I put a metric over to the side that kind of shows, you know, there's times when you have rising costs, and there's times when you're doing more. And then there's times when you're doing both. And I believe that Cleveland County government is in a period of, we're doing more. We're being, our operational plan is exceptionally robust, and the spirit of cost of doing business is just increasing. I put three just high-level, and of course, there's more. Cost centers here to draw your attention to, retirement contribution, and this is affecting every local government in North Carolina, not just Cleveland County. So it's not something that called us off-guard. It's not something we have a plan for, but it is a cost that is incurred as part of the budget process. Our State Treasurer's Office for the State Pension Fund, the retirement contribution costs Cleveland County $900,000 more next year than it cost us this year. We have a very robust wellness program that has delivered tremendous results to our employees and saved us a tremendous amount of money on the employee wellness and hospitalization cost. But drugs that we're buying this year, our forecast for next year is that they'll cost $250,000 more for the same pharmaceuticals. Motor fuels, everyone goes to the gas pumps. Everyone knows that we're in an unprecedented time of price escalation as it relates to motor fuels, and for Cleveland County at large, that's $225,000. So before we ever start the budget process, before we do one thing, we're looking at a 1.3 cent of our 54.75 cent absorption of additional cost just in rise of costs from doing business. So my point is to approach and arrive at a mechanically and fundamentally balanced budget, we're doing it with less, and that requires cost avoidance. That requires really a cultural buy-in and a lot of intangible things that I think only high-performing teams can accomplish while still doing more. So as I said earlier, I think this Board has been as clear as any Board I've ever worked with on the policy direction. It all starts with your strategic plan, and in a period of rising cost and competing priorities, it is critically, critically important for the Board to be clear with your goals, with your priorities, with the areas that you want us to focus on, because that helps us really narrow down with a surgical precision where we should allocate resources. We know that priorities always outpace resources, but we want to make sure that we're investing in ways that advance your strategic plan in the most effective way. As we work through the budget process, one of the hardest things we have to do is to not fund needs, critical needs, that the team may need. What you'll see as we move through the budget, the general fund's about $126.5 million this year. That's what's being recommended. The request was north of $130. So transitioning away four and a half, five, six million dollars of real needs is only possible because of the clarity and the vision the Board set. Our budget calendar is really refined at this point. We're several years into this model that really starts in December, but has actionable items all the way through where we are tonight in May for the presentation and hopefully advancing towards a June adoption. We'll do a measure and react between now and December and start it all over again. And that perpetual motion, again, really offers a level of refinement that we think helps us prioritize your goals. As we entered the budget process following your February 2022 work session, your top priorities for this budget year was to continue to execute on a facility master plan with a specific focus on our justice center. We've been successful in now recruiting. The next step is hosting a competitive national shooting complex out at our shooting range and continuing to partner with the school system and get an adequate long-term capital facility plan. We're incrementally working through our own public safety strategic plan, which has been a priority of this Board now for some time. Our community health rankings, as I've shared with all of you, there's been a, population health has been the tip of the iceberg and the tip of the spear for the last couple of years, but it's been primarily focused on COVID-19 and management there and vaccinations there and reporting there. I'm hopeful that FY '23, and we have allocated resources to reengage into impacting our community health rankings. This specific goal's been on the Board's strategic plan now for four years, and we haven't seen the movement that I intended. We know a lot more than we knew then. I think that it's become a priority, all five Board members. It's something that's important to each of you, and you've shared that with me. And then lastly, this concept of an employer of choice. I can tell you, as a representative for our employees in this organization, that is something that is noticed and appreciated. We want to have competitive pay, modern policy, and continue to work towards career progression. I just mentioned earlier that the budget opportunity really offers a unique opportunity throughout the year to share roles and responsibilities, obviously at a policymaking level, and then putting those policies into action with staff. And I think it's really, really wise to stop and capture and recognize that that's a unique time of year where we can be really, really effective in advancing where we're going. When you add all of the programs, the policies, the strategies that we're working on, I think they fall into one of these three operational pillars. I mentioned that commitment to being an employer of choice. We believe that high performance is our goal, and that's most easily accomplished by attracting and retaining top talent. Being, focusing on the internal operations, that's systems planning, technology, and people, and buildings, and being committed to values and operating every day at the right way. And then lastly, this focus on kind of what's outside of our organization, creation of place, onboarding the casino down in Kings Mountain, managing effectively all the responsibilities that we have with the state budget. And we think if we do all those things effectively, you know, we're really going to serve our purpose, which at the end of the day, we all agree that, you know, we come to work every day to make our community better. I'll touch briefly on its economic outlook. Again, the concept here is that many of our revenues are predicated on the performance of the economy. And the good news is Cleveland County's economy has shown resiliency. There's a lot of people in a lot of communities and a lot of towns, a lot of cities, and a lot of counties that have seen dramatic impact over the last 20 to 24 months, specific to economic performance. But in Cleveland County, home sales are strong, people are shopping, and I think that goes a long way to explain, again, if we're trying to develop an optimistic versus a pessimistic view in some of our revenue pro forma, what do we expect? How do we predict the future? Really, in Cleveland County, we've experienced this dip and rebound model where fourth quarter of 2020, March 2020, when the regulatory shutdown of stay-at-homes, we really experienced this steep decline. People were staying at home, sales weren't happening. And then as those regulations were lifted, there was this surge that's now kind of stabilized, and our economy's continuing to perform at a high level. What we have to remember is sales tax, some of these other things that are collected at a statewide level and then distributed per capita at a state level, we've experienced more of a K shape, which means some industries do really, really well, and others like hospitality and restaurant areas and those type things maybe not so well. And that has to be considered, even though some of our local economic indicators, population growth, 2.4%, residential home permitting and land use revenues up almost double digits. There you can see unemployment rates all the way down to 3.2%. We all know that full employment is defined as 4%. Consumer-related revenues, which is primarily sales tax, which is an indication of consumer confidence and people spending money, up 12.5%. So when you look across that board, things really appear to be performing strong. Another indicator that we try to track is recognizing that industrial manufacturing is such a huge component of our economy. This is our labor force. So if you look at all the jobs in Cleveland County, we are heavy in the manufacturing, bench manufacturing sector, which is really good because it provides sustainable, high-paying jobs, it provides tax base. But we also need to keep a pulse. Some may consider that a concentration risk. And so this is an industrial production index that simply demonstrates the level of supply and demand across the industry. And the good news, again, is we're trying to provide confidence on our tax base, provide confidence on jobs, provide confidence on spending and median income and so forth. The largest sector of our labor force is really performing at an unprecedented rate, as you can see here, really never has supply and demand for industrial production been as high as it is today. Here's the last really high-level analytic. This is from Moody's, and this is called a back-to-normal index. This is a measure of citizen mobility, of people's willingness to reengage in normal activities, which again drives economic energy. And you can see prior to COVID, there they had it marked out at 100, and this is nationally. So this isn't just to Cleveland County or North Carolina, but I do think it gives us some level of indication of what we can expect. And when you follow that through the entire pandemic, we're over here in March of '22 when this was printed, and we're back in the 90th percentile. So again, lots of reasons to be optimistic, but we have to be balanced in our optimism because we have to recognize that year-over-year inflation, real inflation, so this is net, 7.5% increase, that fuel prices are, you know, close to 40% up. Construction costs, depending on what type of construction, double-digit increases. And even though we only have a 3.2% unemployment rate, their labor force participation rate in Cleveland County, only 61%. So a lot of, again, I think there's reasons for optimism. I think there's also, but we just have to balance that. One of the other things that we kind of track and kind of keep a pulse on in our tax base, we've got to, we'll be recommending a tax base of about $10.6 billion this year. That's comprised, as I'll show you momentarily, of all real property, personal property, state boards, and motor vehicles. And of that, motor vehicles is about $900 million. So you're talking not quite 10%, but a big number. And we have to, we have to take a speculative approach to look at the inflationary cost of used cars, which drives the value up, which could potentially drive our tax base up in a, you know, a non-sustainable way. And we have to get a pulse on that to make sure that at some point, we're not going to have a reduction in tax base, which may reduce our revenue. to have a reduction in tax base, which may reduce our revenue, which was used to balance our budget. All of these things are things that are in consideration. The chart here on the right just says there's a lot of other things to consider. There's cyber attacks, there's, you know, the European war and conflicts, there's rising interest rates from the federal government. There's a lot of moving parts that impact economic conditions. And so again, why I think there's reason for optimistic, especially when you bolt that on with our operational plan and an aggression and a robustness there that we've really never seen, it's easy to get a little out in front. But I think what's critical is that we also maintain a recession-ready budget, recognizing that conservatism and being principally driven is critical. So we have taken what I consider a conservative approach to our revenue pro forma. I do consider our budget recession-ready. Amidst uncertainty, we have a team that relies upon data. And then lastly, in our revenue forecasting, we try to diversify our revenue sources. What I mean by diversify our revenue sources is we try to reduce the dependency on property tax and sales tax. Sales tax obviously is an economic indicator. So if you're overly reliant on sales tax, meaning what percentage of your total revenue portfolio is balanced using sales tax, if the economy dips, then that really applies pressure to your budget. Same with property tax. If there's loss in revenue in other places, that really puts an unnecessary amount of pressure on that property tax rate. So we try to do things like sales and services, grants, restricted intergovernmental revenues, other revenues inside that portfolio that help fund services and programs that aren't typically dependent upon economic performance. And you can see here, we've just compared to some regional peers, and we compare very favorably, which tells me that we are as prepared as we can be should there be some drop in economic performance or, you know, some type of recession. The recommended tax rate, as you'll see momentarily, will be at 54.75 cents for the general fund. I backed all the way up to 1997. And not only this board, but previous boards of commissioners have been really, really focused on maintaining as low a tax rate for Cleveland County citizens as we possibly can. I put a slight breakdown over to the side here where you can see how that 54.75 cents is allocated. But as we move into next year, as I mentioned, $10.6 billion tax base, 54.75 cent tax rate, the value of a penny will be a tick over $1 million. And generally, you can see our largest revenue sources, what percentage, what the change was from the prior year. And we'll be recommending about a $3.7 million revenue growth compared to FY22 for next year's budget, with the vast majority of that being in sales tax and incremental 3.25% property tax growth. Total general fund budget, as I mentioned, 126.5. Our largest three components, adware and property tax, sales tax, and restricted intergovernmental, which is primarily federal revenues that flow through social services and public health. Touch briefly on our operational budgets and our governmental funds. Really building the budget, I think it's important to focus that it starts out with scrutinizing the base. We do not do incremental budgeting in Cleveland County. We start every year with zero, and we build to it. We do try to foster cross-departmental cost savings and a culture of performance. It's a pull system, not a push, so we don't just perform. We really seek what's needed and produce that, which is more of a pull method through the production line. And then we've really been focused on leveraging, leveraging this rethink phase, which is the final phase of our crisis management plan, which is focused on sustained innovation. How can we do local government different? How can we do it better? And I think that we've got some strategies to do that. As I mentioned, the general fund's balanced on 54.75 cents. The school tax rate is balanced on 14 cents. Our budget doesn't include any of those non-operational one-time dollars such as ARPA, which is the American Recovery Plan Act, or this opioid settlement dollars. We felt like including those big one-time dollars really jeopardized future analytical comparisons. And so what we plan to do there is put those spend plans together individually and bring back to this board for consideration at that point. You all know, we do have an approved spending plan through the North Carolina Pandemic Recovery Office and our external auditors, but we felt excluding those from the original budget was the most fundamental thing to do. This budget does include Phase Two, which is an additional $750,000 surplus to our future debt service fund for the Justice Center campus. As you'll recall, the FY22 budget included a $1.5 million surplus, so this would be 2.25. And we're tracking towards completion of that project in FY25, recognizing that there'll be debt service that we have to incur and be able to pay for. We have a three-phase systemic approach to employee pay. The first one is a living wage adjustment. I'll talk more about these in detail. But essentially, the living wage adjustment is really focusing on the bottom tier, some of our lower-paid employees. There's about 46 folks that we believe are working a full-time job but not earning a living wage, and we want to make adjustments there. We have an organizational-wide approach for our COLA to keep us competitive, and we're recommending continuing our performance pay system. For the first time since I've been the manager, I'll be recommending 10 additional FTEs, which for those who know our organization is very uncustomary. We've been able to reduce our organizational head count by 100 in the last four years, leveraging technology, focusing on process refinement, and that's given us a tremendous amount of flexibility to really bolster some of the programs and some of the projects that we've been working on. But this year, as the community's growing and as we're recognizing that growth, and when I say in our first slide that we're not only in a period of rising costs, but we're also in a period of growth, and growth management is always more difficult, but you have to manage it in a proactive way. So that's what's driving these 10 additional FTEs. As I'll demonstrate later, it's about a $702,000 annual cost. Four sheriff's deputies, each of those sheriff's deputies would be dedicated for two primary purposes. One is a warrant division. Sheriff Norman and I've been working on this for some time and believe that it is critical to the operation of that agency. They also will be dedicated resources to involuntary transports and committals for mental health, which may be six 12-hour trips and take deputies out of rotation. We have one IT position, one 911 telecommunicator, one emergency management fire marshal, one animal services officer, which will focus primarily on second shift and weekend-type coverage, and then two environmental health officers, recognizing really the increase and the demand for that service. Cleveland County is not immune from, similar to other counties, we've been averaging three, four, or five weeks behind on that. It's a very high-level credential position that takes a long time to train, so we're trying to hedge some risks there with turnover and really bolster that function. The $120.5 million general fund's broken down by these functions. As you can see, human services, education, and public safety all take up about 27% of the budget. That literally means 27 cents out of every dollar we spend in Cleveland County goes to human services, education, public safety. You can follow the other functional allocations. What I would say, as I made a big deal about earlier, and how thankful we are for the board's clarity in your policy decision, you can see really the change since 2015. From 15 to 23, there's been a very intentional reallocation of resources without growing the entirety of the budget. We've been able to reallocate resources from other functional areas to align them more closely with the Board of Commissioners' policies. Nothing more evident than in public safety, growing that from 19% to 27% in an eight-year budget cycle without growing the entire budget. As you can see, in 2014, that same timeframe, the county had a budget of about $113 million. And the recommended budget in 2022, 126.5. So about $13 million budget growth over eight periods. That is less than incremental and only accomplished through reallocation of resources based on priorities. Obviously, we haven't been able to grow those functional areas in a right-sized way, all with new dollars. I'll move quickly through the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan, starting with each of your focus areas, looking here at physical sustainability. Really, the goals on your strategic plan, specific to physical sustainability, is this concept of an employer of choice, execution of the capital plan, leveraging unprecedented opportunities with state and federal grant opportunities. The board changed at your February work session your unrestricted fund balance, percentage from 18% of annual expenditures to 20%, which I think is prudent in a period of such rising cost volatility, and then continuing to really rethink, re-engineer, support innovation and implementation. And that's all about doing more with less. Here's how we measure our performance under this focus area in your strategic plan, and I'll walk through each of these and give you kind of an executive summary of where we're at. Reengineering for us, as I said earlier, is really the way that we are able to identify and create resource flexibility to apply to priorities, again, in an environment where those priorities always outpace resources. So you can see on the left here, here's just examples of contract renegotiation, cross-departmental consolidation, indirect cost revenue maximization. And we've been able to generate about $7.6 million reoccurring. So over five years, that's $35 million of cost savings or revenue maximization that otherwise would not have been there. As we move into next year, we have five strategies to support this concept of reengineering. The first one is a stop-loss adjustment. We know that that's a very measurable number. Blue Cross Blue Shield is our third-party administrator for our self-insured employee wellness fund. That's about a $10 million fund. They not only are our third-party administrator for claims adjustments, but they also are our stop-loss, meaning once a medical claim exceeds what historically has been $150,000, we do have some insurance forgiveness. And we're moving that to 200. We've looked at six years of claims add and believe that that's a very wise move. And that reduction will save the county about $300,000 in administrative costs. Technology savings, things like electronic timekeeping, things like year three of ERIP. We know those things are going to save us money. It's very difficult to measure on the front end, so we're able to compare existing cost to future cost and report back to the board on what that is. Building consolidation, that's public health and social services. I toured that building today. We're ahead of schedule, no pressure. And again, difficult to manage. We know that we're going to be able to capture some depreciation allocation to the state, because the Health Department is still a building that's not fully depreciated. We know that having one power bill, and one, you know, all of those overhead costs of running and maintaining a building being consolidated, we know it's going to be considerable savings. But again, it's a measure and report model. Our Public Defender's Office, helping reduce jail population, feeding less people, washing less clothes, all of those things, we predict the Public Defender's Office will be a predictive analytic, may reduce our ADP by 20, 25%. It will be significant. And then lastly, position justification. As I mentioned earlier, we've been able to successfully navigate doing more with less people over the four years to the tune of about 100 FTEs. And that's really, again, a measure and report at a later date, but we know that it will create flexibility in our budget. One area that we have been very intentional about investing additional resources into over time is technology. I think physical sustainability and our investment into technology will only help bolster our ability to do more with less and be more efficient, be more lean in our operational achievements. Really, we've drafted a 2025 technology plan that's focused on automation, customer interface, and data security. All three of those pillars are critically important and require funding. When you look at funding per user, we have about 1,000 end users that a very small department of 11, 12, 13 people manage. And moving into next year's budget, we're going to continue this trend of additional investment both into operations and in capital, topping $800,000 in dedicated capital for technology. Our approach in human capital really is very simple. We can be inefficient and have the most people, or we can have the best people and pay them the most. And that's what this chart is intended to illustrate. Back in 2018, we had 855 full-time employees. At the time I did this chart, we had 735. Our total organizational people cost has relatively been flat, meaning our total spend has been in that $38 million range or so now for a few years. And it's basic arithmetic to say if you're spending $38 million divided by 855, or $38 million divided by 735, you're really able to more eagerly invest into your talent, recruit higher talent, retain the talent that you have, and ultimately produce higher performance. Here's another way to illustrate that. Back in 2018, the cost of a 1% COLA was $357,000, and four years later, it's only $359,000. Again, another way to illustrate the same approach, the blue bar shows the number of employees that the organization has, and the orange line shows the average wage. And so I think this goes a long way. And again, as I mentioned, as we talk about this commitment to being an employer of choice, these are really meaningful, meaningful movements that the Board of Commissioners have been supportive of, that have positioned this organization to perform at a high level. You're talking a 30% average COLA over the last eight budget cycles, some one-time payouts there, but it's just a major investment into our people that we have to continue in the FY23 budget. I mentioned earlier in the budget summary, 10 new FTEs for a total cost annually of $702,000. I would point out that our intent, depending on demand, for our environmental health specialists, is that they're temporary, meaning we will continue to measure those and at the time that we either have retirements or those folks become credentialed, those are positions that we would evaluate at that time. I also mentioned this three-phase approach to human capital investment, starting with a living wage adjustment, followed by COLA, followed by performance pay. I'll walk through each of those in detail. The first one is, again, a very intentional effort to invest into the 46 lowest-paid employees in Cleveland County, who we believe are working a full-time job but make less than 150% of the federal poverty rate, which is $31,200. Our proposal includes a progressive increase up to 13%. The average is 4.8. That really closes the gap between what we're defining as a living wage and what those folks are currently at. The total cost of that's $80,000. That part of the plan also impacts about 70 part-time employees, mostly our collection site employees at our solid waste collection sites, as well as some employees out at our shooting range. Both of those functions are primarily managed and ran day-to-day by part-time employees. The second phase would be organizational-wide COLA. I'm proposing a 3% adjustment effective July 1, along with an additional 1% increase into 401K. That would bring our contribution to 6%. We've been an industry leader, and I think that gives us some competitive differentiation in recruitment. At 5% for some time, in the last 12 months, several competing counties, talent-competing counties have matched that. So this reestablishes Cleveland County as an intentional leader in investing in the people. I'd also point out that we've got a TBD proposal for January 1. That's going to depend on market trends, affordability, revenue expense performance in the first six months of our fiscal year. And then lastly, continuation of our performance pay that we've talked about for some time. We're really, really focused on being a performance-led, driven organization in which results matter. So we've tried to divide, design an incentive-based performance management system that really has three layers. We're at the organizational level. This will be the third year of being able to execute at that. Employees qualify for potential 3% bonus that does not go into the base. As we've talked about before, each of these metrics are designed to be self-paying, meaning if we hit our designed performance metrics, it creates the flexibility to pay those employees. So there's really no additional cost to the budget. And then the other two functions, meaning at some point, we want to advance our performance management system to include departmental-specific goals, and then ultimately individual goals. And we're working on that as we move forward. Those would be, here's our six qualifiers for next year, again, payable in September and in March. Our employee wellness fund, as I mentioned earlier, is about a $10 million self-funded plan. We have 827 covered lives. This pays for things like health claims, biometrics, wellness center HSA contributions, and it continues to really exceed expectations. I ask you, if you compare FY22, where we're spending about $564,000 per month, to 2019, when we were spending $643,000 a month, that $80,000 a month savings times 12 months, that's $960,000. That is a tremendous positive impact on our budget, and it's been achieved through disease management programs, pre-diabetes classes at the YMCA, discounted YMCA rates, a culture of wellness. As you all are aware, the Charlotte Business Journal named us the, you know, in their top group of small and mid-sized employers for employee wellness and having that culture. And these are real resources. These are the same resources that pay the light bill, the same resources that fund programs, the same resources that advanced the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan. Included in next year's budget are all those same programs. We are moving the employer-provided contribution rate from $1,000 a month to $1,030. Spouse-dependent coverages are unchanged for the 12th straight year, and we're really excited about the return that we're seeing in our investment into employees' health. I mentioned earlier, it's an unprecedented time for state, federal budget allocations. We are grateful for these resources. They advance what we're able to do, certainly in a way that's unachievable without these dollars. But we also recognize that it comes with a huge responsibility of management, compliance, allowable costs, reporting, and so forth. But very excited about a $59 million grant from the General Assembly to help with our courthouse. I mentioned as part of the consent agenda tonight, this $450,000 grant for a mobile command unit, the Public Defender's Office, and also a $5 million grant that will be used in some way for primary care access in Cleveland County to our most at-risk and most at-needs citizens. Our grant management strategy- Our grant management strategies, I've talked a little bit about ARPA and the opioid, but I'd like to point out other ways that we're trying to eagerly and aggressively seek these grants, which again, lower our local costs. We have an SRO grant, which puts an SRO in every school in the county. We also have a victim specialist grant, which is, again, both of those are housed in the Sheriff's Department, but a really unique and a really, you know, critical component that bolts on and supports folks who may be involved in some type of crisis management and not know where resources are and how to attune to them. And so those are just two examples that I wanted to point out, where we are trying to be physically fiduciary-minded and look for alternative funding sources versus just traditional property tax, sales tax, other areas. Transitioning to public safety, again, the specific goals underneath the public safety focus area on your strategic plan, competing completion of our public safety strategic plan, which we intend to complete in the early fall of FY23, be Q1, early Q2. The seamless transition to a central-administered EMS system, and I would bolt on to that, improved response time and patient outcomes, working on developing a nuisance ordinance, this public safety campus, and then maintaining support for our volunteer fire. I mentioned earlier that public safety has, was, if you go all the way back to 2014, 2015, was only about 19% of your county budget, and today it's about 27%, which aligns much more closely with our peers. And that's an example of priority-based budgeting. When you look at that same timeframe, you're talking about $10 million more per year to public safety than eight budgets ago. $10 million more per year. This year includes about $2.5 million increase. As you can see, about a $29.8 million spend, and now we know that we have, are spending an adequate amount of money on public safety at large, whether we look at it as total spend, excuse me, or if we look at it on a per capita basis, meaning what amount are we spending per citizen, per taxpayer, per person in Cleveland County to make sure that we're providing professional and adequate public safety across all five functions. In the Sheriff's Department and in the Detention Center, we have caught and surpassed our peers. I think it's important to point out, public safety, unlike a lot of the other functions that local government provides, is much more of a reactionary approach, meaning that it's not somewhere that is refinement means spending less, because if you want to have certain response times, if you want to have adequate coverage, if you want to have high performance, oftentimes that is more easily accomplished with additional resource allocation. Here, I've compared EMS and 911 to our peers. Both 911 and our emergency management functions are, we in Cleveland County are spending less. Most of that's attributable to people. We have less people in those functions at this point, and over time, that's something, as our community grows, that we need to evaluate and right-size. From a volunteer fire service perspective, the recommended tax rate is 8.75% unchanged. The total allocation is about $5.1 million. A couple of very important deliverables included in this year's budget is we're going to be able to increase both the hourly wage and the per-call stipend. The hourly wage will move to $15. This does provide Saturday, Sunday daytime coverage, and in total, the increase is about 12.5%. Here's a quick, I know that's difficult to see, but here's the average, here's the total allocation. It's the Fire Service District, $5.1 million over 10 units, $510,000 average. It's about $20,000 per unit increase in base operations, about $25,000 to cover the increase from $12 to $15, and about $35,000 per unit to provide the Saturday, Sunday coverage. Transitioning to community wellness, as I was teeing up the budget, what I said at that point was, this isn't somewhere that we've had tremendous traction, but it is somewhere that we've learned a lot, meaning that we're still outside the top 80 out of all 100 counties in community health. Four years ago, this wasn't on anyone's radar. For the last four years, it's been on the Board of Commissioners' strategic plan, and it's something that's talked about by the hospital, it's something that's talked about by the schools, and it's an endeavor that's been led by this board. I think that making it a priority, making it that visible is incredibly important, and it continues to be on your strategic plan. And we have resources allocated this year to that community-based initiative to really try to impact those in a positive way. Effective use of opioids is certainly part of your plan, investing into our trail systems. We had economic impact studies done this year, some grant opportunities in next year's budget to really, you know, improve and invest into those assets. And then finalizing a long-term strategy with both commercial and residential solid waste. When we talk about community wellness, really, the two departments that that fundamentally impacts more so than anything else is Public Health and Social Services, and they are the shining star of doing more with less. Back in FY15, those two departments were allocated about $12 million, local money, and that is equivalent to almost eight years later. And they have really led the charge on rethinking and doing more with less, and I think it's provided a lot of opportunity. Now that we feel like we have our budgets, really in a more right-sized manner, we're able to delve into how can we improve our community? How can we make our community more comparable from a wellness perspective to those peers? As you can see here, Cleveland County currently ranked about 81st out of 100 counties in community health, where the other counties who are just like us in every other factor, demographic, population size, budget size, median income, poverty level, Medicaid eligibility, are performing at a much higher level. So we need to, as I said earlier, we need to be able to divine, design really strategic surgical approach to trying to understand that. And I think we've, over the last couple of years, really been able to culminate a tremendous amount of data that points us in the right direction. One of the biggest challenges that we have, Cleveland County here is the red line. This is a measurement from the National Center of Health Statistics, so a very objective data source that measures premature deaths, premature deaths being anyone who dies under the age of 75. The green line is North Carolina. The yellow line is the federal average. So clearly, Cleveland County does not compare favorably to folks who are dying earlier than this arbitrary age of 75. But it is a good predictor of all the things that we know we're not doing great at, such as obesity. We know that waist circumference leads to chronic disease, cardiovascular, diabetes, so many other diseases that, you know, we've talked about many times, Cleveland County's stroke rate is 80 per 100,000, and the state average is 40 per 100,000. And how many of those lead to a premature death? And how many of those strokes are created because of things like obesity or things like, you know, preventable hospital stays? This is a predictor of access to care, which, as I mentioned earlier, there's a $5 million allocation from the state to the county to help us deal with this. But when we look at the number of physicians compared to our citizens, we don't compare favorably there as well. Contegra, which is from Gaston County, is an end-of-care, primary care provider that's moved into our community, actually buying and merging with CLECO. We think that's a value add. But we've got to continue to look for ways to address some of these things that aren't impacting us in a good way, and I think that finally, we're prepared to do so. This chart simply shows our investment into social services compared to Medicaid eligibility, and we've talked about the erosion of community wealth, even with the job creation. But you can see here, this red line is a measurement of the number of eligible Medicaid participants in Cleveland County and how that compares to some of our peers. And all of that's being driven by poverty and social determinants. So with the new census, as I mentioned earlier, a more precise approach. We know that poverty, access to care, behavioral lifestyles such as diet, exercise, tobacco use, alcohol use, that's what's driving premature death, obesity, all those type things. And we're able to further refine those to these specific census tracts, which gives us a roadmap to do some community-based education, community-based care, and really reach out and try to impact people's lives in a positive way. Transitioning to citizen engagement, we are, we do have resources in the budget to assist with broadband expansion in our community, which is really, really important for young people doing school at home or people starting a business. And we want to be dedicated in making sure that we're trying to leverage opportunities in federal dollars. Maintaining support with this concept of placemaking, implementation of a Citizens Academy, something else we've been talking about for some time. We hope to launch that in September of this coming year. Community beautification, and then really concurrent marketing and communication as it relates to some pretty dynamic changes to our animal services ordinance that the board's been working on over the last year. I mentioned broadband expansion. We have three opportunities. The first one is called ARDOF, the governmental relations expert from Charter Communications presented to this board back last fall, a plan that would be executed over the next five years with no local dollars. That would impact and provide access to these green highlighted areas here of our county, and it would provide high-speed internet to 1,960 homes. There's two other opportunities. One is the GREAT Grant, and one is this CAB GRANT. Both of these do require a local match. You can use the American Recovery Plan dollars for that match, and the GREAT Grant would add additional 1,200 homes. There is a non-disclosure on which homes those are, so I don't have an optic there. And then this CAB GRANT would be kind of the one-off. So if there's a road with three homes on it, that really doesn't have a measurable return on investment, that's the grant that really provides access there. So really, over the next, between now and 2025, we believe that the vast majority of Cleveland County will have access to broadband somewhere in the high 90 percentile range. Our Citizens Academy, I mentioned September kickoff. This is an innovative approach to help create advocacy and education for what all county government does. And obviously, this is a draft and a pilot program, but it's something we're excited to do, and I really see this as another leadership opportunity across North Carolina. Lots of municipalities do that, but it's fairly uncommon for county government. In the world of economic development, this national shooting complex, we've got dollars in the budget for the expansion needed to add the capacity to host that national tournament. Ag economic development continues to be a priority. We're currently working on Shell Building 4 with our partners at the city, hope to complete that by the end of the year. Shell 5, we believe, may be located on the former Duran Mill site, so we have resources allocated to finish the construction, design, and grading to get that side pad ready. Partnership with the Fair and investment into our travel tourism strategic plan. One of the things that I'd like to point out is that the Board of Commissioners made a policy decision in 2018 to extract travel tourism from the Chamber of Commerce and bring that in-house. And since that point, our occupancy tax revenue has really, I think, the identification of a target market, very, very intentional advertising, digital campaigns, connection with our director with some industry has really helped bolster that. And you can see here, at very marginal cost increase. So again, just another example of policy, of really positive public policy decision that's generating return for our organization. Here's the optic of the Duran Mill site. It's about 75 acres. The county inherited that back in 2000, early 2012, '13 timeframe, and it's really been a development process beginning in 2018 to best understand the highest and best use. Finally, we have a schematic design, construction drawings, we believe will be ready early summer, grading to take place in the Q1, Q2 of FY23, and again, hopeful that this may be site for Shell 5. Touch briefly on our capital plan. Again, the most robust capital plan in the history of Cleveland County, anchored foundationally by the $140 million expected cost for the new Justice Center. I would remind the board that we have a 93% 10-year payout for our debt function, meaning that in the absence of new debt issuance, all of Cleveland County's debt will be paid off by 2033. So we've been very intentional about positioning ourselves to have debt capacity, improving our bond rating, and we recognize for that project, there'll be a significant borrowing, probably in the $62, $63 million range. But that bolted on with all these other capital programs. We're all driven by the facility plan that the county did in 2017. It's advancing our commitment to capital and really going to put us in a place to be, you know, set up foundationally and structurally for some time. I'll touch momentarily on education funding, which is our public school system, as well as our community college. The goals for Cleveland County Schools, dedicated funding for capital, future capital, as well as teacher supplements, financial equity, and not impacting charter schools. Quick reminder of the funding sources and how the money flows, which ones are shared with public charter and which ones are not. As you'll see here, really, the last three budgets at Commissioner Policy Direction have been rolled over foundationally flat. FY22 saw the first deviation from that, in which we took this restricted, and this is restricted by the state, by statute. Historically, we had allotted 1.45 million. The Commissioners directed us to create an escrow. We put $700,000, continue to go to Cleveland County Schools for pay-as-you-go capital. The additional $750,000, which was the equivalent to 3/4 of 1 cent, went into a Commissioner-controlled escrow. Moving into FY23, it's consistent policy direction. All these funding sources stayed similar, other than this local capital, which came out of the county's 54.75 cent tax rate. We reduced that by $700,000, and then the additional $700,000 will be going into this Commissioner-controlled escrow. The additional 1.45 restricted is in the same path as last year. As I mentioned, that escrow, it was, there was plant money in FY22 of $750,000, but it will also accumulate overperformance in some of the non-affixed revenue sources such as property and sales, and we anticipate at June 30th of this year, those dollars being about $3 million. And again, as you mentioned, dedicated funding for teacher supplements and capital. Of that $3 million, 1.5 will go into a capital reserve controlled by the county Commissioners at your discretion. The other 1.5 will be sent to the school system in July to fund 2% teacher supplement increase. Here's just how we've compared, as you'll recall, last year, prior to the year that we're in, our school system was at a 3.5%, and that was rolling and adjustable, but on average, 3.5% supplement. Proactively, the school system did move to a 5.75 fix this year, so the additional 2% will take us to 7.75, which will begin to position us as a leader and really help with recruitment, retention, and talent attraction. Here's just a summary of total funding. As you can see, we've moved from 0 to 750 to 1.45 in this escrow, again, dedicated for supplements and capital, but total spend, 29.63 for educational funding. I'll close with this one on the education side, on the public education side. I think it's important to show that the per pupil funding, total funding, when you include the dollars going into the escrow for Cleveland County Schools, continues to increase, next year being at $24, $29, $2,429. But a measurement of cash flow, if you're asking, because of the very, the escrow that was created for future needs, cash actually will be at about $2,085 per pupil. So again, evaluation of those three goals, I feel like we've been able to accomplish each of those in the recommended budget, and feel very confident about the approach that the board's taken. Briefly on the community college, there's 58 of them in North Carolina. Most of those 58 are funded by multiple counties, not a single-county funding model. And you can see Cleveland County compares very favorably to the state average as far as FTE, which is full-time students, and state and federal funding. But we've been lagging slightly on the county operational funding side. All the way back in 2019, we worked to create a five-year funding ladder to try to forecast how, you know, how we would be more competitive and more comparable to some of our regional peers. Here's 10 counties in North Carolina that, when I compare them to Cleveland County, have a very similar population and a similar general fund budget, the value of a penny, their kind of economic distress level through the North Carolina Department of Commerce. All of those indicators tell us that they're a fair and favorable comparison and gives us really a benchmark to better understand where our true funding level is to Cleveland Community College and make sure that we're competitive. Moving into FY23, I'll point out really three things. Number one, since this team has been together, we've increased annual funding to the community college by $549,000 per year. That's a 24.3% increase. The year that we're in, FY22, saw a $400,000 increase, was 17% one year. And what I'm proposing for FY23 would be $3,58,872, which is an 8.9% increase or $250,000. There's also an in-kind contribution being amortized over five years, which is the parcel of land out on Highway 180, which would add another $39,950 to that number. Very quickly on support for outside agencies, continuation of our Park and Great Grant for our municipal folks, $147,048. We've got about a $2.1 million earmark for other partnerships. That's increased from 1.8 last year, so a marginal increase there predominantly outlined by the Fair. And then lastly, on our agenda today, is our Solid Waste Department. It's about $11.9 million fund. Of all the operational departments that we have, the inflationary costs have impacted this department more so than anything. Skilled trades, heavy equipment, motor fuels, all of those have been an incredible impact on this budget. I would also point out to the board that we have really less than half the state still has a functioning line municipal. still has a functioning line municipal solid waste system, and meaning, if you don't have that, then you're transferring your household waste from your citizens to another county, which really drives up costs. So we're really blessed in Cleveland County that commissioners 25 years ago took a visionary approach, acquired substantial land, and we have life left in our landfill. But as you dispose of household waste, and as that decomposes, you also have the responsibility of monitoring and making sure that the environmental side of the budget is being accounted for. I'd remind you that we've got a $22.5 million unfunded liability, and that's something that, really, the funding of the landfill is much less about people, fuel, and equipment, and much more about future obligations and environmental reporting. Included in this budget is a $1 per ton fee for litter cleanup, and we've also asked our engineering firm to do this review and proposal of a new 10-year rate stabilization plan that includes a 10% increase in tipping fees this year, followed by residual 3% increase through 2033. Here's a quick illustration of why that's needed. When you look at some of these advancing post-closure costs, and we're looking at compaction rate and life of the landfill, and a variety of other variables that really go into anticipating what level of reserve is going to be required to keep our permit. And I would remind the board, too, that our tipping fees are much lower than any of the opened and operating landfills that are around us. So that increase will be impactful, but still leaves us in a very competitive place. Our collection sites, if you've been to Oak Grove, tremendous amount of investment and improvement in that site. That is becoming the prototype. We've really got a plan to impact as many of our collection sites as possible, focused on safety, efficiency, and customer experience enhancement. And that concludes, I think, 93 slides of the FY '23 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of comments and then a question, but I'd like to commend you and your staff for putting this together, because it's a lot of hard work. Y'all got started real early, and it's really been a hard job. I guess my question is, in the early statement, we showed that the cost of living has increased quite a bit for our employees. Okay, I guess my question is, we said we're going to do a 6% savings in a 401K. That's good, but if the cost of living is high right now, why couldn't we say we're going to do a 4% 401K and give the employees another 2% on top of that to offset what's happening right now, rather than 10 years or 15 years down the road when they retire? That's the question I'm asking. Look into that before we do the final budget, would you?
Yes, sir. You want me to speak to it now, or just evaluate it and report back?
I think evaluate it and come back, because that way give you a time to talk to your team and see what they think.
Sure.
But I commend you and your team
Thank you.
for the job y'all have done.
Thanks, sir.
To me, it's mind-boggling. I'm sure with you being in the accounting world for a long time, it's not as overwhelming. But to me, a budget this size is a real tall-heeled climb, and this team has done a great job. So I think we have some great employees in our county.
Yes, sir.
I'll just echo that. Appreciate all the hard work. I know this is months in the making, and, you know, 100 slides, but that was countless hours, and we appreciate it.
Echo what everybody said. It's a great job.
So I would say the same thing. Thank you, and I would say the comments I made before. So budget's only part of the process, so it's a long-term plan. It's a funding plan for the county for a year, and any type of municipal budget is an ongoing process. So you have to build a budget, and then you have to implement the budget, and you have to make sure that we don't overspend. So it's a continuous process. I thank you for the work of managing the budget throughout the year, as well as preparing the document for our funding plan for the next year. And I don't want to speak for the other four, but I look forward to the conversations between now and June 7th about any questions that we may have. I look forward to going through this book, and I'm sure that I'll have some questions, and I'm sure the others will as well. Look forward to talking those, getting to those, answers to those with your staff, and seeing if we can refine anything in here that the board may want to do before it's finally approved on June 7th.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right. So make sure the public understands, so the next steps of the budget process, there will be a public hearing for the manager's fiscal year, our county's fiscal year '23 budget. As stated, it was recommended tonight, it'll be available for public review. You want to recite again where it will be?
It'll be at each of the three public libraries, as well as this building, as well as online.
So with that, you'll have public inspection. Any questions that you may have? The commissioners, it's scheduled to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, here in the commissioners' chambers, beginning at 6:00 p.m. And as Brian stated earlier, that is a statutory requirement by the North Carolina Budget Act. And at that time, the commissioners will have the options either to vote, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Brian and Martha, but we can vote to approve the budget as is, deny the budget, or amend and approve with any amendments as stated. But it has to be a balanced vote.
Can I ask a question? Online, you mean on our website?
Yes, ma'am.
Just clarify.
If I can also add in, it will be on Friday. It's when it's statutory, when we have to. It will be available here for you to view. It will be available online. That link will be posted very clearly on the website for everybody to see. We'll also be at the Shelby, Boiling Springs, Kings Mountain, and Lawndale libraries first thing Friday morning, so they're there, those four places here and online.
So then one last thing I'd like to say before we move forward, so I'd also like to thank the other commissioners for the work thus far, setting the priorities and making on your expectations of the budget process and working on the budget until this point. And look forward to having additional conversations as we refine the budget and get it approved before the state mandated deadline. All right. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. Tonight, we have appointments to the Cleveland Community College Board of Trustees. Commissioners, before you, you have a list of applicants. I think there's nine applicants on this list. We need to appoint two to the college board. These terms will begin July 1st of 2022 and run through June 30th of 2026. And we have two, right?
Yes.
We have two that we need to make.
Two appointments.
Two four-year terms. So with that, what we'll do tonight is we'll start at the far left, and we'll see how this goes the first time. If we have a large variation of names, we'll vote till we get two names, but we'll start. So Commissioner Bridges, what's your two recommendations?
I would like to recommend Tony Berry and Kenneth Leffler
Okay.
to the college board of trustees.
So you're keeping?
Yes, I'm keeping.
All right. So Commissioner Whitstone?
I'll agree with Tony Berry and Kenneth Leffler.
Okay. Commissioner Hudson?
I'll go along with those two names also. This is going to go easy then, that's the majority already.
Commissioner Harp?
The two, same two.
All right. So I'll follow suit with the same two. So it looks that our nominees are Anthony Berry with the unanimous vote, and Kenneth Leffler with the unanimous vote.
Can we, since everybody agreed, can we just get an actual formal?
So with that, since we all agree with that, so I'll entertain a motion and a second to appoint those two, just so that we cover all the bases. Go ahead.
I so moved, Brian.
Okay. And Johnny, you second that?
I'll second.
No motion, a second. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed will say no. Motion carries. So I guess we'll notify those.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, with that, that brings us close to the end of the agenda. So commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to add or report? All right, seeing none, is there anything from county staff? All right, with that, so before we send the motion to adjourn, the county commissioners will meet again on Tuesday, June 7th, here in the chambers, beginning at 6:00 p.m.